The council meeting on May 19th, 2025, 6:00 PM, Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. Our invocation will be provided this evening by Laura Dean Wiley, Chair of God at Center Committee at Truman Habitat of Humanity. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight, to be here, and to do the work of the city. Lord, I just ask for your protection through these storms. Please continue to allow your blessings to be upon us. And as decisions are made and opinions shared, Lord, just please let us continue to live with a feeling of community and unity. It's in your name I pray. Amen.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
And that brings us to seven members who are here. Could I have a motion to take the proclamations out of order?
Yeah, make a motion to take the proclamation before citizens' requests.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to do the proclamations right now. Does anyone have any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
And we have two proclamations to present this evening. One to the AMR operations and also to the City of Independence Fire Department. And so whereas emergency medical services are vital for our public service, and whereas members of the EMS organizations are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas emergency medical services embody the true concept of teamwork by recognizing the interdependent relationship among trauma centers, EMS system hospitals, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medic-- excuse me, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others who are dedicated to saving lives in the EMS system. And whereas the members of the EMS organizations routinely engage in thousands of hours of continuing specialized education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas the City of Independence Fire Department has been providing emergency medical services at the emergency medical technician or EMT level since 1993, augmenting this level of service with paramedics beginning in 2000 with 58 paramedics and 135 EMTs currently on staff, and the AMR response has been providing emergency medical services, including transport at the paramedic level since 1994. And whereas 2025 EMS strong nation theme is "We Care for Everyone" reflects more than a half a century of service delivering that EMS professionals have provided and recognize at the unending commitment that EMS professionals have as they continue to respond to the needs of our community without bias, without question, and without hesitation. So with that, we want to recognize this week as Emergency Medical Services Week. Next, we have citizens' requests, and I need a motion to allow non-residents to speak.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
And the motion carries seven in favor, zero opposed. The first person up is Mary Tackett. Mary Tackett, please state your name and your address and--
She's spoken before. She has three.
And you have--
They all have three.
And you have three minutes because you've spoken this topic before. Thank you.
My name is Mary Tackett, and I am--
Can you pull the microphone closer to your mouth so that-- There we go. Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect.
Is that better?
Much better.
All right. My name is Mary Tackett. I was raised during Independence. Just since February is I'm not in Independence anymore. I've always been in Independence for the last 70 years, so I feel like I do have a voice. In general, I have been talking to the governor, Mr. Quixote. The governor supportive of bus services as a key component for the public transportation. They recognize the benefits of public transportation in terms of economic development, access and opportunities, and environmental status, while knowledge knowingly and need the facilities improve the roads, the bridges, the governors, and avoiding border vision and includes public transit. I keep hitting the wrong button on my phone here. Public transportation can help and connect workers to jobs participating in areas to which they do not have any service in. They were trying to use this IRS, which is worthless. They call, and sometimes they have to call a day ahead of time. They only have one minute to get to the cars if they arrive within that time. A lot of times, they're 10 minutes, 30 minutes late, and the people have called somebody or tried to get a neighbor to bring them to wherever they need to go because they have certain appointments that they cannot do. And if they miss the appointment, the doctors make them wait another week or so. And IRS has a very bad habit of doing that.
You have one minute, ma'am.
They have tried many times to take care of it, but IRS is-- doesn't listen. Public transportation needs to be car-dependent or bus, leading to emissions and smaller carbon foods to keep the carbon out of the area for the people. That's a priority for the governor. Public transportation can help alternate the traffic conditions in the cities, less congestion for the community and the effects, and reduce delays for people to go to work. The governor said that he was going to try to make special arrangements to come up and talk to the council. It was a request from over 20,000 people that made it. So you will be getting a call here pretty soon, and we hope that you listen and can understand. And he believes no matter where you live, if you have--
And Ms. Tackett--
--times where you have to come in--
Your time has expired, I'm sorry.
--or go back and forth, that you can take a transportation or get somebody to bring you. I know, my time limit is up.
Please.
But I'm just telling you what the governor said. Didn't make any difference how long somebody can talk--
I'll be happy to listen.
--or anything else they need that.
But to be respectful to everyone, we've got to-- We've got to respect the time limit.
Well, since there's only four of us, I don't think there's any time.
Thank you. Next up is Renee Robey. Robey, please forgive me.
My name is Renee Robey. First, I would like to apologize for my behavior last week at the study session. I don't usually do things like that, but the frustration level of not having public transportation and trying to use IRS is overwhelming. I have yet to be able to schedule a ride with IRS. I'm either told that it's there, but they don't seem to be able to tell me where "there" is. It's an arrow on a map, and I don't know what that means. Or you have to go onto the app to make your first appointment, which I have friends who have vision who cannot see that app no matter-- I can't see it no matter how much I enlarge it. Or you're told that there's-- I'm told that there's no service in my area. I live in Independence. I have for a lot of years. So this has been an expensive year for me because of the choices I've had to make to get to work downtown Kansas City, to get to daughter's appointments, pick up prescriptions, go to the grocery store, because IRS is not-- IRS says that they've serviced 573 people in a city that has over 120,000. Big whoopee. That's sad. They're not doing-- They're not doing a good job, and they want more money. I realize that it's expensive for a city of Independence this year too, and I know that it'd be extremely expensive to reactivate the buses now that they've been totally deleted, where it would have been cheaper just to keep them running. I don't understand why we can't run them and charge a fare that brings income back in to help support the bus system. We're going to be-- It's going to be in the red for a long time now that they've been deactivated. I don't mind paying a fare for a public bus. We used to do it before COVID, and I don't know why we can't go back to it. It's more reliable than IRS, and it's way cheaper than Uber. I've spent a fortune this year on Uber just to do what I need to do.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Please bring back the buses. Huh?
One minute.
Is it up? What did-- I can't hear what you said.
Just have one minute.
One minute? Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Lisa Yule. And please state your name and your address, please.
I'm sorry?
Please state your name and your address, please.
Lisa Yule, 11141 East 27th Street South, Independence. I'm here to talk about the buses, of course. I've been-- I use IRS when I absolutely have to. Because the fact is, it's not reliable. It's certainly not user-friendly. The drivers are fine. It's when you have to call in and talk to someone that can't tell you where to go to wait. They tell you it's near to someplace that doesn't exist. Financially, it's not acceptable, you know? Like she said, I don't mind paying a fare for the bus, but $5 a ride is more than I can afford if I have to go more than one place a month. It's just been horrible, and I have heard so many times that IRS is adequate. It's the best option. No, no. Try using it. Spend a month with the kind of income I have and no other options and use nothing but IRS, and then tell me it's adequate because it's not. The only people it's adequate for are the people-- The 59.8% of rides who are abusing the free spots. I'm not one of those. I've used a free spot three times, and I believe I'm up to now I've had 14 or 15 rides with IRS. So that-- And that's since January. So that tells you I ain't doing very much. And four of those rides was just on Friday because I had to go pick up my friend because she couldn't get one scheduled from her house on her account. So I had to go to her house, get her, and have another one scheduled to come get us from there. And it was a cluster, just to put it nicely. It was horrible. I've had them tell me, well, we don't have service in that area. I've had them tell me that I was going to take a ride to the-- To the Transit Center across the street. They said, that's-- What's the address? Well, I don't know. It's the Independence Free Transit Center. Well, that's not free anymore.
You have one minute, ma'am.
And so all I have to say is, please, bring back the buses, put in fares. We don't care. We just need something that's reliable, and you know where to go, when to go, and that you know you're going to get where you're trying to go. Thank you.
Next up is Teresa Peterson.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Peterson. I am a co-owner of Red Gate Disposal. We are a local trash hauler that is a little bit on the smaller side. We are up based out of the Smithville area. We're family-owned and operated. We've been in business for about 19 years. I am here today because we received a cease operations order letter in the mail for one of our dumpsters that we have had-- We have on-site at a U.S. Bank location here in town. Now, I will fully own up to the mistake we've made in our due diligence in ensuring that we were compliant with what we needed to do. To kind of give you a little backstory of how we ended up with that account, most of these large commercial accounts are done through brokerages. They send me a list of addresses and say this is-- With the size that they need at this location of dumpster, this is how often they need their dumpsters tipped, that kind of thing. And this location was incorrectly listed as a Kansas City, Missouri address, and we had missed that it was actually within Independence City limits. So we were without a business license. As soon as we got the letter, we did get into contact to try to remedy the situation, but we're told that the City of Independence is at the maximum number of trash haulers that they will allow. The reason we are here today is that we are asking to see if the board would consider an exclusion to allow permits that allow commercial hauling only versus residential areas. The reason I understand that you all have the restrictions in place on how many trash haulers you will allow under your city ordinances is I certainly understand that residential streets are not necessarily built to withstand the weight of heavy equipment, but in the areas that we are currently running on large commercial highways, large thoroughfares, those are a lot more well-equipped to handle the weight of our trucks. In these circumstances that we work with these brokers, a lot of the time, we get a list of 20 addresses, and it is an all-or-nothing scenario. So if we can't service all of the locations, it's going to go to somebody that can because brokers often don't want to have to manage multiple parties, which I certainly understand. The risk that comes in with that is it often limits your local businesses to two or three of the large national across-the-board refuse companies that then have more freedom to charge exactly what they want to charge because they are in a position that they can get it. In these circumstances that we are breaking into these brokerage accounts, we are often seeing that our rates are, I would say, two to three times lower than what a lot of the larger firms are charging. I certainly want to respect the, you know, council's decisions, and I certainly recognize your concerns about the impact that they may have on residential streets, wear and tear, that sort of thing. But I also want to bring attention to the fact that these restrictions may unintentionally exclude small businesses from participating in the local economy. So the current city ordinances read that one collector is permitted per 17,500 residents. That allows business licenses to be issued to approximately seven haulers. Of the approximately 123,000 residents, of those seven haulers, on average, I would estimate that they would have to have the capacity to run about 17 routes per week just in Independence alone to service that number of accounts. So we have grown exponentially as a company. We are running about 10 routes a day, but the capacity to run 17 routes a day in Independence alone-- Or I'm sorry, 17 routes a week in Independence alone just isn't feasible. And I want to draw attention to that, just maybe a little bit extra consideration from the board that it may be a reasonable compromise to consider allowing an exclusion for commercial waste only. It would both limit the impact you guys have on residential streets, making sure that we're not adding any additional wear and tear while allowing for more healthy competition. Are there any questions that I can answer?
We typically don't take questions at this point, but--
Absolutely.
--I'll be happy to chat with you afterwards if you want to talk.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I move for approval of the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any other items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Can you please pull Resolution 7-- I'm sorry, 25747.
25-- I'm sorry. Okay, I see. Yep. Councilmember Stewart has asked for 25747 to be pulled separately. Any other items for separate consideration? Seeing none. Councilmember Stewart, we'll come to you in a moment. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
And the consent agenda is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to Councilmember Stewart, 25747. The floor is yours, Councilmember Stewart.
Motion to approve 75-747.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Stewart, please proceed.
So this resolution, it would simply give-- The GeoBond that passed last April for the streets, it would simply give oversight to the Street Improvement Oversight Committee. I did speak to three members of the Oversight Committee, and none had any objection to that. I believe an email was also sent out with the members blind copied, asking for any input. I do not believe any negative comments were received regarding it. So in the interest and the most transparency for the GeoBond, I would ask for support on this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, during our study session, there was a request made to see if we could transmit this particular meeting, and I just wondered where we were with consideration of that.
We're preparing a resolution for Councilmember Stewart to bring to a study session per the council rules of procedure.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions, comments, concerns, discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll call the roll on 24-- Excuse me, 25747. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Resolution 25747 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-027, second reading, and ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements and temporary construction easements for the Nickel Avenue Culver Replacement Project, project number 132404, authorizing negotiations and, if necessary, the initiation of eminent domain proceedings, authorizing the use of experts as needed, and authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion-- Excuse me, any discussion on 25027? Any discussion on 25027? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
25027 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25028. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-028, second reading, and ordinance amending section 4.01.003, dangerous buildings of the Independence City Code, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25028?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, this-- I know this issue has come up because we have had recently some big delays in knocking down dangerous buildings where the owner has used a number of legal tactics to stall demolition of buildings. So I understand the reasoning behind it. Can you please explain to me what the process will be now for buildings that we think are so unsafe they need to be knocked down more expeditiously?
Certainly. Really, the only substantial change, instead of a appeal for a dangerous building demolition ruling going to the Board of Engineering Appeals, Board of Adjustment, that will now go to the Circuit Court. We've had trouble establishing a quorum for that board on a number of occasions, which is then conflicted with the deadline in city code for due process and how quickly these hearings have to be held. So this will now send-- Once a hearing is held at the city with the city's hearing officer, if that property owner wishes to appeal the city's ruling, it will now go to a judge in the 16th Judicial Circuit.
So they still get due process? It just speeds it up from our standpoint?
Yes. It kind of bridges this incongruous gap between the number of days between when an appeal is filed and the appeal has to be heard. Instead, sends that to the Circuit Court.
And can you give me a sense of how many buildings in a year's time we're talking about and kind of what the condition of those buildings would be that would pose a danger to the community?
Yeah. There are 21 different criteria. Not all 21 have to be met, but that would classify a building as being dangerous. I would say the number of those that are being appealed to that board on an annual basis are less than 10, and at any given moment, the city has over 200 cases on its dangerous building demolition list. So it's a very small percentage of the overall total. And typically, what we find is it's somebody who's trying to extend the deadline while trying to work out some sort of real estate transaction or some other solution where the property itself is no longer their concern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion? Any further discussion on 25028? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
25028 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25029. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-029, second reading, and ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19561, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25029? Any discussion on 25029? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
25029 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25030. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-028-- Second reading. 25-030, second reading and ordinance amending chapter two of the city code, alcoholic beverages, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25030? Please proceed.
So, Mr. City Manager, this doesn't change anything that anyone would expect in the alcoholic beverages. It just reasserts that you have to be of age in order to purchase. Is that fair?
Yeah, I'll be a little more plainspoken. Somebody got fat-fingered when they were deleting changes in city code for previous ordinance, and we took out the section that says you have to be 21 to buy alcohol, which of course would not put us in compliance with anybody in the United States. So we wanted to make sure we got that back in there. That's not an outlier we wanted to be.
Thank you. I'm highly in favor of people being of age before they purchase alcohol, so I'm gladly voting yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion on 25030? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25030 passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25031. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-031, second reading and ordinance declaring the results of the bond election held in the city of Independence, Missouri on April 8, 2025, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25031?
If we vote no, it doesn't change the outcome, does it?
That is, that is absolutely true. The question was, if you vote no, it does not change the outcome. I just might ask, if I may, Mr. Coover, what's the process and why do we have to do this? I would think, you know, once the vote is in, it's in, but if you could just get, for those folks watching, just basic lesson in civics on why do we have to go through this process?
Sure. It is a formality, as Councilmember Fears just said. Voting no would not change the outcome. Voting no does not keep it from taking effect. It is simply, this is, as a matter of process, the council recognizes the election results, and this is part of that process. But were you to not vote on it, or were you to not vote in favor of it, it wouldn't change the results. It just doesn't put it officially, you know, on the record, which is what we like. So that's why we do this step.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on 25031? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25031 passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. And as Mr. Coover says, now this makes it official. This brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-032, first reading and ordinance amending chapter five, article 10 of the Independence City Code regarding private security guards, first reading. 25-033, first reading and ordinance amending chapter eight, article six, purchases and sales, section three, and directing the city manager to amend the procurement policy accordingly, sponsored by Councilmember Stewart, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'd like to make a motion to amend this item on B3. At the end of that, I would like to add the phrase, "When the total amount of said contract
So when the total amount of the contract exceeds $30,000, then, if the amendment passes, then it would be brought to the city council at that point, if I'm hearing you correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment?
I might just make a comment, and that is that, you know, I understand the intent and the purpose of this ordinance. I just am trying to be more, in my mind at least, more practical as to what level of dollar amount that we want to give the city manager. And this gives, you know, this takes into account the intent of the ordinance, but it says under 30,000, you know, that's a more minor agreement and would let the city manager do that. And I recognize we don't usually make amendments on first readings, but I just thought it would make sense to do it tonight. That way, everybody would have the ability, if it passes, to think about it for the next two weeks before we, you know, actually make that change, you know, vote on the ordinance. So that's all.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I don't know. I, like, or the ordinance how it's written, I'm going to vote no on the amendment. While I do understand why Councilmember Fears is doing it, I mean, but the simple fact of the matter is, we vote on, the city manager approves probably less than five of these a year. I don't think it's really going to be any undue burden on the council to vote on these if any come up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be voting no on the amendment as well, and when it comes up for the second reading, I'll be voting no, because there's not a problem with the procurement problem, process that we have now.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion? Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay. Since there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment. It is a first reading, but the amendment, we will, we will vote on the amendment now. Yeah, we will vote on the amendment now.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
No.
Councilmember Stewart.
No.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
No.
Mayor Rowland.
And the amendment fails. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-033, first reading and ordinance amending chapter eight, article six, purchases and sales, section three, and directing the city manager to amend the procurement policy accordingly, sponsored by Councilmember Stewart, first reading. 25-034, first reading and ordinance amending chapter 13, article one, section 13.01.005 of the Independence City Code to prohibit metal detecting, prospecting, and treasure hunting in city parks and public spaces, first reading. 25-035, first reading and ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, chapter 14 of the Independence City Code pertaining to auto repair and motor vehicle equipment installation, first reading. 25-036, first reading and ordinance repealing chapter one, article 40 of the city code, which outlines the establishment, purpose, and responsibilities of the Tourism Commission of the City of Independence, first reading.
Thank you very much. And now that brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of items related to IPL. First, I just wanted to mention to the community that we've begun our discussions regarding governance, the governance model of IPL. Members of the community may recall that last year, our consultant, DKMT, made a recommendation that we evaluate alternative governance models for IPL. We began that process as a council recently with a discussion session to begin to consider what elements might be important in a different governance model, and we plan to continue that discussion on June 16. In addition, we are looking for some opportunities to visit other municipal utilities or visit with other municipal utilities and hope to gain some additional insight from governance models, their models, that will help inform our discussion. So that was one item. The other item on IPL is that, on another note, the PUAB met this last week, as they do regularly. As part of that discussion, they had considerable discussion regarding AMI, or Advanced Metering Infrastructure. This was another recommendation of our consultant last year, and the city has begun to consider this and has recently completed the process of receiving quotes for a company to help us consider this possibility for power and light. I just want to bring this to the community's attention as we're very early in this process, and also because several years ago, this was considered and it caused quite a stir in the community. I want to mention this at this time because IPL staff is currently evaluating the proposals and likely will be bringing this to the council soon. Also, I wanted to mention this because there's already some concern in the community about the ability to opt out of this service. I think it's fair to say at this point that we do believe that there will be some form of opt-out from AMI, but it's way too early in the process to determine what that is or what it would look like. I just want to mention this at this point in time because I'm already hearing concerns in the community, and I feel it's important that the ratepayers understand where we are in the process and that we have heard the request for the ability to opt out of this program loud and clear. On a completely separate note, Councilmembers Wiley, McCandless, and myself were able to be at the EMS Week event at Fire Station One today, and I'm pleased to report that Chief Walker makes a mean hamburger. And not only is he fire chief, he's fire chef, chef. So, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several things, so bear with me. So there are some exciting changes coming to the Rotary Park. Our parks and recrew have been installing new playground equipment. They've added features for adult fitness and upgrades to the splash pad with paint to resemble a beach ball. So they are inviting people out to come celebrate a rededication ceremony on May 22, this coming Thursday, at 4:00 p.m. Kids, community, everyone's invited, and come check out the new playground. Also, we will have popsicles in the park coming up, starting in a few weeks. It's a free event. It's six Tuesdays in June and July, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. So check out the city's website for more details on which parks this will take place at. Every week it's a different park, so make sure you either check out the website or their Facebook page to find out which parks. Also, I am excited to share the progress that is moving forward on the Sonic at 35th and Nolan Road. The owners decided to update the new facility to, the new Sonic prototype, so this will be the first and only Sonic with this new design in the state of Missouri. It's always encouraging to see reinvestment in our community, and this project reflects growing confidence in our local economy and helps keep our commercial corridors vibrant and inviting. If everything stays on track, we're hopeful to see them reopen in July, and I look forward to seeing the finished product and for them to welcome their customers back. Recently, took a trip to Washington, D.C. alongside Councilmember Wiley and Councilmember McCandless. We met directly with our federal legislators to discuss several key priorities facing our city, including to advocate for funding to support overtime costs for our emergency services during the upcoming World Cup. While Independence is not the host city, we are just a few miles from Arrowhead Stadium, where matches will be held. Despite our close proximity, we do not anticipate receiving any portion of the host city's designated funding. Meetings with our legislators face to face helped them better understand the strain that this global event will place on nearby communities like ours, especially in terms of public safety. The World Cup will be a 24/7 event spanning approximately six weeks with an estimated 650,000 visitors to our region. That volume of activity will absolutely impact Independence, and we must be prepared to respond to any number of emergencies. Our police officers, firefighters, EMS personnel, and dispatchers will all be essential during this time. We are not asking for extras, we are asking for the resources to make sure that our city stays safe, staffed, and ready. I did receive some good news from Representative Mark Alford's office that the Department of Homeland Security will be authorized to make grants to localities for the security funding. Once that bill is passed, and the money is available, they have offered us assistance, so I am hopeful that our advocacy leads to the support that our first responders need. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wiley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank the Station One also for the EMS Week celebration cookout today. We were also able to see two new apparatuses in the station. That was very exciting. And then I wanted to mention the Independence Police Department Memorial Service that was held on Friday, May 9. It was an absolutely beautiful day. It was a very powerful, moving service. We honored all of the fallen officers from Independence and Sugar Creek. And the Independence Police Pipes and Drum Band made their debut, and they have been practicing for about a year. Am I right in that some of them learned the instruments? So these are, these are police officers who had never played these instruments before, who practiced for a year. They played Amazing Grace. It was so beautiful, and I just wanted to thank them for doing that. And in addition, members of our police department spent the week in Washington, D.C. this week for Police Week and to honor Officer Cody Allen, who was added to the wall, and to remember him, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too really appreciated the attention that our Republican and Democratic lawmakers gave to us while we were in Washington, D.C. We talked about a variety of matters, World Cup being one of those, the availability of transformers for our utility being another one, the affordability of municipal bonds which we use to finance our utilities and our infrastructure. Should that change, those things would become drastically unaffordable for cities. We also talked about the cuts to regular people, so utility assistance, some of the housing funds that come into Independence, and specifically the Community Development Block Grants, for which we get $895,000 a year, and we use those dollars to help seniors stay in their homes. So we partner with a number of not-for-profits, Triment Habitat being one of those, they're one of our key partners, and they allow people to stay housed. I feel like we had good reception from our local delegation. I do think that the presence of people speaking about the impacts to the citizens of Independence is really important, and I can understand where people would be like, "Well, it doesn't matter." I just don't think that's true. So I feel like it was a well-timed and well-planned visit, so I appreciate the staff making that possible for us. I have a couple of shout-outs. One to Kelly Chris from Municipal Services, who received the Crystal Crucible Award because she is Lab Professional of the Year. You don't hear Crystal Crucible often. I'm very pleased to be able to use my chemistry knowledge there for one shining moment. The second was Lindsay Goldman, who received her Certified Municipal Official from Missouri Municipally, if you will pass on our congratulations to her.
Will do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Independence Power and Light gave a wonderful tour to me and one of the Utility Board members, and we spent some time looking at the really complex system that oversees all of the transformers and substations. We have a lot of architecture that we have to pay attention to, but it's important to know, especially if we're going to leave in a storm, you probably had flickering lights. We had an outage last week, which was quickly restored. But one of the challenges we have is, if your house goes out, you have to get on your phone and call the utility to tell them you have no electricity. That is a really, really inefficient system. So they just have to go, "Well, is it at the substation? Is it at the transformer? Is it in the line? Is it on its tree? Is it just your house? Is it your block?" Advanced metering that Councilmember Fears talked about allows us to immediately map where the outage is so that we can be really efficient with sending our utility staff. It's cost savings for the community, and it's going to speed up restoration services. So there's a lot of reasons for advanced metering. Some of them is so that I can control what time of day I use my electricity. It's cheap in the morning, it's really expensive in the evening, I can do my laundry in the morning or the middle of the night. So that's why we're talking about advanced metering. Almost every other community in Missouri has it. So there'll be more to follow on that, but I just want to be sure that people understand kind of the context before we move on to this conversation. Shout-out to Municipal Services also for the drug takeback.[1790.73] Shout-out to Municipal Services also for the drug takeback. They collected two-hundred-and-forty-five pounds of medicine. As a physician, I'm going to tell you, you do not want to put that cocktail in your toilet, because the fish start to look really funny if you put all of your medicine there. So please use drug takeback. It's the very, very best way for us to protect our water source. And the last item is that Jackson County tax, their Revenue Department Director, is going to be holding public visits, and the next one in Independence is on May twenty-eighth at three-thirty, May twenty-eighth at three-thirty at the North Independence Branch Library. So if you would like to be able to ask some questions about your property tax, that is the person to ask, because he is the most knowledgeable about those. He was a past elected official, so he speaks well in public, and he'll be able to take all of those questions. Please be polite, because I know there are a lot of strong feelings about people's property taxes, but it's a good information gathering time. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real, excuse me, just real quick, invite the city council on a quick reminder of those over off of Winter Road. The Winter Road Complete Streets Community Engagement is tomorrow from four to six at Van Horn High School. Come and go. There will not be a set presentation, but there will be boards and members there from the design team to talk and to discuss, and you can ask your questions and get your questions answered and put your input in there for that part of the construction. It's about thirty, forty percent complete, so we need public comment and input with that. That goes from Twenty-Four Highway to Hedges off of Winter, so please come and get your input. Mr. City Manager, I do have a, maybe a question. Perhaps you can send an email out to the council regarding our motorcycles. I know spring's upon us, grass is growing, it's raining, obviously, so can you kind of give us a brief update on what our motorcycle's going to look like this year? If it's been the same, going to be the same as it has been in the previous years, and what that may look like?
Yeah, let me get a communication put together that I'll send out to the council, and then we'll also publish that in our citywide newsletter that goes out and get it on the website, so the community is aware of what that looks like as well. It's not as frequent as in years past. Part of that is strategic, you know, being more environmentally friendly. Part of that is a necessity with our staffing and, you know, making sure we're getting to all of the places in the city, but doing so in a way that's reflective of the staff we have available.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And that brings us to you, Mr. City Manager. Anything to wrap up the meeting?
I will only add, Mayor, that next Tuesday and Wednesday are the special meetings that the council has scheduled to hear presentations from each city department on their budget that's being proposed for the fiscal year that begins July one. So we'd encourage the public to take note of those two nights. Obviously, with the Monday holiday, we won't be in session, but Tuesday and Wednesday is the opportunity to hear more detail about the budget, particularly at the departmental level.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else before we wrap it up?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. With that being said, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.